We'll call the City Council regular meeting to order from Monday, May 6, 2024. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Brennats.
Here.
Councilmember Lean.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
All right, any changes to the agenda, Leonik, Holly?
None.
Katie, Steve, Lynn, all right, seeing no changes, we would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Holly.
Okay.
Second by Steve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to our, Section 5, our announcements, we'll start with 5-1, which is the update from Commissioner Slavik. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good, good evening, do I need to do something out here to make gather?
John, can you hit the button for the podium?
There we go, thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmember, city staff, my name is Mike Slavik, I am the Dakota County Commissioner for District 1, which includes all of Farmington, Hastings, and all of Southern Dakota County, and here for my couple time a year update just of what's going on at Dakota County. You know, this is, so traditionally, over the years, I've always been for the very first meeting in May, and then the second meeting in November, and then whenever else you need me, and those who were present, I was at your workshop last week, so, but just, just kind of give you a little update of what's happening in Dakota County and the partnerships that we have, so I just, one of the things that, you know, obviously, this is, last year in November, I was going to share about how the City of Hastings had asked me to go and give a little bit of an update on what happens with assessed value and, and that, so I worked with our assessor to just kind of give a little bit of a update of what's happening countywide, as well as some of the perspectives on the City of Farmington in terms of market value and kind of how the county determines what, what your house is worth for what the taxes will be on that, and before that, I just want to briefly say, you know, I, I always, I'm glad to be back here in the very first meeting of May, because I don't think I've done that with any of you who've been up here, but historically, for the first about five, six years, I did the twice a year, and then I think the council and mayor were, yeah, once a year is enough, we, we, we see enough, we don't need to see it twice, but I'm glad to be able to come back, and you know, it's always a little nostalgic for me, is, nine years ago, the very first council meeting, I was coming down here and got the call saying, hey, guess what, you're going to be a dad, you're, um, the birth parents went and picked you to be a, so, so it was literally, I always remember that first meeting here for that reason, so it's, it's good to be back and doing that, because it's just a nostalgic memory of that, so, wanted just to share a couple general updates of what's, what's happening, particularly with Farmington and Dakota County, and the first of all is shortly, within the next month, we'll be having a, working on a groundbreaking in the construction of Denmark Trail, which is the workforce townhouses over by St. Michael's Church, that, uh, the Dakota County Community Development Agency is working, as we all know, having housing for people who are working, who maybe don't have the higher paying jobs is very important, especially if you have young families, and we have about 900 units of those throughout all of Dakota County, and through the partnership with the city, we'll be breaking ground on additional 40 units this year, within the next month, we've already awarded the contract, and we're really forward, looking forward to that partnership. I know recently, you've had the Farmington Library, which is part of the Dakota County system, but we're coming very close to summer programming, and I know just the community want to be aware about amazing programs this summer, you just had a really fun program with kids, a kid's prom this weekend on Saturday, if you talked to anyone in the community at the Farmington Library, but also Whitetail Woods has their music concert once a month the last week of, of the month, and so there's a lot of great activities, you know, the county park just to the north of here, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Before I talk to the next one, the county manager, some of you are aware, some we're just finding out today, Dakota County's CEO, the county manager, is retiring at the end of this month after a long tenure with Dakota County, so the county board is in the process of going through to hire our next county manager for Dakota County, so it's a pretty lengthy process, will take us about three plus months to, we were kind of in the middle, we've now got the applicants, we'll whittle it down and hire for our top job in that part there. I do want to say that one of the, on these steps in here, we will be including the city elected and city staffs, as we're all really frankly partners in much of what we do, so just want to give you a heads up that, please do attend, and as we go through some of the process, and to kind of give your feedback on who would be the right leader for us to go in as a county board to choose for the county. And then just the last thing, just a quick talk, it's not on here, but transportation projects, there's not major projects happening within city limits, but I do want to just make you aware that the North Creek Trail, the, the Greenway, that's in the process, is on track and doing everything as it's supposed to be, to be completed by this year reconstruction with the nodes, and, and so that's really exciting news. For those who happen to be watching from south of Farmington and on County Road 86 and the railroad bridge, that's delayed again, it's hoping to be back on track, starting again next week, there were 38 work order changes, and the railroad only approved 32 of them, so we've been going through lawyers for the last number of weeks, and that has put that project on hold again, but we're being told that all will be resolved by the end of this week, so we're looking forward to getting that, that project in 86, which feels like it's been going on for years, and it actually has been going on for years, will hopefully be done by the end of this year. I wanted to also, what I came here for was just to kind of talk a little bit about the process for county assessor and how your value is, and I think that, you know, the Farmington City Council, from the state of the city to the workshop you had last week, has been really having a conversation of your tax capacity and what's been, you know, what percentage of your taxes come from commercial property, from industrial, from residential, and here's kind of how the process works for every single parcel, there's over 170,000 parcels that our county assessors go through every year to go in and determine the market value. It's, what it's determined is what the value is on January 2nd of that given year, the market value goes through, they, they look at recent sales comparables on that part in there, they work with the Department of Revenue, that's the DOR, to go in, so not every sale is going to be a, done, that's going to be recorded, and so there's, there's possibility that might be family transactions, so, so they're able to go through and do the part in there, and they consider sales for basically a, a one-year period the, the year before, so what you saw when you got your statement in March for the assessed value was going from 20, October 1st of 2022 to September 30th of 2023. Your value of the market value must be, as it can, as you can see on here, between 90 and 105%, and Dakota County really tries to be about that 95, 96% in there for its market number with that part in there. I just like this example, this is the countywide, but I think it's a, it just shows something as kind of the stories we've heard with Farmington of where you're trying to find that appropriate blend, knowing that industrial property, commercial property pay a higher tax rate than residential property, and much of Dakota County, much of Farmington is residential property or agriculture, and not those units that pay the highest amount of property taxes to pay for our police, fire, and roads. So this coming year, just over 73% is residential, the remaining, remaining categories, and there are the remaining 27% of that. The overall capacity, what is the tax capacity in there, 558 million with that, and that just goes and shows you, that's a better example of, you saw that residential was 73%, 73% of the overall properties, well, they're only paying 64% of the actual property taxes, and that, by the way, that tax capacity should be a B, not an M on there, so that's a 858 billion is the, on, I took that back, no, that one, that one is a million, excuse me, but I just wanted to, just, we're kind of going through on here, one of the things that you're seeing, and we've seen that a little bit from the times of COVID, is just that the, I, I should have had the expert here, huh? They'd walk through it with me, but I will say that one of the things that we are seeing is the shift is going that, we were seeing commercial industrial property, not seeing the valuations go up during COVID, work from home, well, that has kind of been shifting back, so the residential properties, when homes were selling for more, remember, Farmington two years ago was 17.1% assessed value, market rate going up, was also at a time when the commercial property, industrial property were going down in value, so if it's a balloon, your homeowners were paying more automatically because residential was paying more than commercial industrial. We are seeing a shift of that, and 2024, 2025, we'll see that pretty dramatically, that our commercial and our industrial are seeing substantial increases in their valuation of market rate, whereas residential properties are seeing a much smaller portion. An example, this, this is countywide, and then I'll give the numbers for Farmington, but countywide, the median increase for residential property is .11, and keep in mind, we've been, when I've come and seen you in November, December, these last number of years, it's usually been somewhere between 5 and 17% every single year. This conversation for next year, .11, for Farmington as a whole, all residential properties, .31, so that is, that is just something on that part in there, so just to give you just some perspectives on that. Apartments, which have been usually the driver that have seen our values, that's kind of been where the balloon were, they were seeing 10 to 20% a year increases, where we saw a lot of apartments in the, in the county, and they were seeing where most of the value increase came from, they're actually going to see a decrease for the first time in decades. Going back, going back to the early 2000s is when you actually saw apartments go down in value in Dakota County, but they are, they're going to see a decrease as well. Commercial property on average is going up about 5%, the aggregate increase for industrial is over 8%, so that's just a, so they are seeing the, the lion's share of the increase that we're seeing, new construction, new growth, but we're also just seeing their values, they, they stayed kind of very close to zero during the post-COVID time, when houses went up, and kind of the balloon's going the other way around. Agriculture, which is, this is actually lower than where they've been the last couple of years, but agricultural land in past years was about 7, 8%, it's going to be about 4% of an increase of its market value. So something to note on, on the market value with agriculture is that's actually not determined by the assessor, but by the Department of Revenue, does all agricultural property within Dakota County, not at, at the county level, so that's, those parcels are separate, but we were able to get a aggregate number for that, so that's just to kind of show you where we've been on that part there, so just for some conclusions on there, you received your statements the week of the 11th of May, of March, that is the, the one that shows you what your property taxes, which are due next week, as well as what your value will be for 2025, and they determined that through this process here, so for what you will pay and what the residents and businesses will pay in 2025, these are how they got the value, so it's all based on your market value. I'll use the example, recently, I purchased a car in town here, and the first thing, I walk in and talk to the owner, and he's like, you're the commissioner, I know this, why is my, why did my taxes go up so much? And I, he had his reasons, I, we pulled out his tax statement, went right online and did that, and I said, well, the value of your property went up $100,000, and he's like, oh, I did do a lot of improvements, so I guess I could, I could see that, I'm like, well, that would be why, because it's based on your market value first, and then it's based on any increases that every, any level of government would do, so I think that the common misconception is, lot of, lot of government agencies did 1 or 0% or did a cut when their market value went up 17%, so even though the, the local unit of government maybe did not have an increase, you saw that just based on market value, now it goes the other way around, where you're seeing kind of the shift from residential to commercial industrial, so kind of a lengthy way to do this, but it's complicated, and most of the general public doesn't always understand that, so I thought I'll take advantage of that second meeting of the year to go in and give you a little education if I could, so. With that, are there any questions for this topic or anything else related to the county?
Thank you, sir. Katie, any questions?
I don't have questions, thank you, Mike, for being here, and of course, for explaining that process, because it can be quite frustrating, especially in Farmington, we're working on it, right?
You certainly are, yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Steve?
I just appreciate your collaboration with us and your continued, you know, visits down to us here in Farmington, so thank you.
Thank you.
Holly?
No questions.
Thank you.
Great presentation, I, I always love providing more points of education for everybody that's, you know, looking at stuff and wondering, how did that happen, why did that happen? So I thought it was great.
Yeah, great, always informative, I really appreciate, even like last week, just showing up to a work session and dropping even a hint that kind of helps us along, so your presence around here is always really appreciated, and I like how much you make the effort to, to show up and be involved in your district, so.
And I will add, I absolutely, and I know our staff do as well, working with Farmington, both the electeds and your staff do an amazing job, and, and I would just say, as you all know, you certainly can reach out to myself or our staff if there's any issues or concerns, but I also, to the residents and the business community, if they, if there, if there's an issue that we can kind of address and work together at, you know, we'll do it, so.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is 5-2, our new employee introductions. Where did Julie go? No Julie, there you are. It's like, where'd you go?
So we are going to introduce 1, 2, 3, 4 new employees tonight, so we'll have each on respective department head do that, so we'll start with Josh for liquor store.
Love y'all.
It was in the job description.
Yeah, buddy. Yeah, thanks.
Hello, everybody, my name is Josh, I am your liquor operations manager, I'm here tonight to introduce our latest hire, Bradley Duffy Altermat. Now, as you know, we don't do very much hiring at the liquor store, once they join the team, they stay on the team, but this last February, my, one of my teammates let me know that they're moving to South Dakota, and despite my best efforts, apparently, four hours is a little bit too much of a commute to continue working for the liquor store.
I would have to imagine.
So we needed a hire. Now rewind a little bit further, back in October, we did a fundraiser for the Farmington Police Toys for Town and 360 Communities and the Farmington Food Shelf, we did a silent auction, and throughout this auction, I kept seeing this name pop up on all the auction items, and it'd be like a UV blue dartboard, I bid $25, the next day I come in, name's Duffy, $75 on a dartboard, like, what is this all about? And I realized that I need to get to know this guy, because it's less about the stuff and more about doing good for his community, so I made it a point to introduce myself to Duffy the next time he came into the store. From that point on, we kind of built a friendship through text, mostly talking about bourbon, but we built up a friendship, 100%. And he let me know, hey, if you're ever hiring, let me know. So when we found out we were going to lose one of our crew members, we worked with Julie, and she got the job posted, and I let Duffy know the day it was posted, and that day, he applied for the job. We did our formal interview a couple weeks after that, and approved everything that I had already thought about him, all good things, he's kind, he's caring, he's funny, he's energetic, he's going to fit in with this team, like, this is the guy.
I agree.
Thank you. So, so we got it done, and he started the day after he was approved, or his hire was approved, and since then, it's been great. After his first shift, I checked in with the team to see how he did, and we've got a glass half-empty guys every once in a while, like, that's how he reacts, and I asked him, how was Duffy's first day, and I was expecting like a, it was fine, it was okay, and it was a, it was great, Duffy came back while I was working on the orders and asked me three times, how can I help? And really, that's like, the best thing a teammate can do, is ask, how can I help? So that's Duffy in a nutshell.
That's 100% true.
Welcome.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome aboard. I love it.
All right, Deanna unfortunately could not be here, so she asked if I would introduce her two newest team members, so I am in lieu of Deanna, excited to introduce two members of community and economic development, last year, the department went to a bunch of pretty extensive reorganization, we wanted to better align the positions with the priority of the city, so we created the planning coordinator, the economic development coordinator, we also had exchange, experienced a bunch of change with retirements, we lost our building official and our administrative support role, so today, we're fully staffed, and so we have two new team members that round out that staffing, so the first one is Sean Pajewski. Sean is our newest building inspector, so he fits in really nicely with our team of Matt Olson and Brock Haskamp, he has experience that he brought with him, asks a lot of questions, has great ideas, and he just has a desire to do good work for Farmington, so he's quickly acclimated to Farmington, and he's out in the field every day, working with contractors and homework, homeowners, performing quality work, so we're excited to have Sean here. There you are. Secondly is Melissa, guys, so I don't know if you guys remember Melissa, she started with us the very end of last year. Last week of December, temporary basis, we needed some help with the front desk, and then when the building permit technician position opened, we were so excited that she applied for it, she had all the credentials that, that we were looking for, and she hired, we hired her, and it's one of the greatest compliments we get, she's the third person that was a temporary person or a contractor working for the city that chose to stay with us, so we just really find that impressive, so right now, she's still helping cover the front desk while we look for that person permanently, and then she's already working in her new role, scheduling inspections and working with contractors, so we're excited to have her here as well.
Welcome aboard, both of you. Thank you.
I'm John Powell, Public Works Director, I first want to thank the City Council for your vote of confidence and recognizing our need, in 2024, you authorized two additional Public Works Maintenance Worker staff positions, and I'm here to introduce Isaac Sherbal, he's one of our new Public Works Maintenance Workers, he also started a day after the council approved his hiring, he grew up locally, Rosemount graduate.
Yep.
Went to Dakota County Technical College, he has a varied background, which actually fit in very well, he's, he was an apprentice lineman. He served, served, he was with the Dakota County Highway Department for four years, working with them, and most recently, was working on sewer line repair, televising, lining, and making repairs, so that covers a lot of the service areas within Public Works, and he's fit in very well, can-do attitude, and probably still learning where everything is, but we're very happy to have you, have Isaac on our team.
Nice to meet you all. Very happy to be here, everything's going smooth and great.
Welcome aboard as well, sir. Thank you. Thanks, Isaac.
All right, moving on, our next item is Item 5-3, which is a recognition of Katie Porter's contributions as City Councilmember, and Lynn?
Well, Katie, we want to recognize you for your years of service, as you turned in your resignation for your council seat, we wanted to make sure that we recognize you for all the great work that you put into the city and the community, so with that, to recognize you from all of the team, the staff and council, we'd like to present you with this award.
Oh, I can, yeah, I'll do it now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you so much to all of my, my peers, department heads, everybody, unexpected gift and blessing, but that's Lynn for you, so it's really been an honor and privilege to serve in this capacity, I love this community, wholeheartedly love this community, have met some amazing people, and I look forward to continuing relationships with staff through friendships and no longer colleague, but I'll, I'll still see your faces everywhere, and Kelly has some more baby bunnies for me to rehab at my house, so I, I don't, I don't think I'm going anywhere anytime soon, yeah, this, it's hard, right? It's, it's hard to leave a service position, you feel like you're letting people down a little bit, but as we speak, I have three family members at home with fevers of 104, and it's just, it's hard, you know, being a parent and, and juggling it all, and I need to do what's right for me and my family, and I'm going to continue my education, hopefully go on to get my master's degree, and help people in a different capacity, so welcome to all the new team members, great hire right there, smiley guy, if, if Dean gave you the mark of approval, then you're good, right? Welcome, Isaac, I've already seen you work in sewer lines in my neighborhood, both of you, thank you for coming back, Melissa, thank you for working for the city, yeah, you guys are, always will have a special place in my heart, all of you, and this isn't, this isn't goodbye, it's just see you later, so thank you for everything that you do.
Steve, you want to add anything there?
Is see you later kind of a Minnesota thing, see you later? Sounds like a, kind of like the half an hour driveway conversation.
Yep.
Katie, I've really appreciated getting to know you, work with you, I know that you juggle a lot, and, you know, we appreciate your husband for the sacrifice that he gives to our country, and he's very dedicated to that, and you're also very dedicated being, you know, a really busy mom, a really active mom, but also the spouse of a individual who's serving our country, and the number of balls you have to juggle, quite frankly, is at times mind-boggling for me to, to, to recognize and, and see, and I just really appreciate all that you've given to the community, honestly, I wish things would have worked out where you would have been able to stay, but I also know that your future endeavors are things that you're excited about too, so I wish you the very best.
You want to go next? I had something in my head all day, and I knew it was going to leave as soon as it was time, but I really, I can't express how difficult it can be to do this job with small kids at home, and how admirable, admirable it is to step up and do this, to represent your demographic and our demographic of kind of younger families with young kids, so the service you have put in is well-appreciated. Feel free to honk at me anytime awkwardly in the Blue Nose Drive-Thru.
Watch for the white minivan.
Yep. Now I know.
I knew you before this, and it was, it was interesting, because you were one of those individuals that I really wanted to, to seek the honest opinion of, when I had considered where I might be in this space, and were it not for your candor in that, were it not for you to tell me all of the things that were great, and also all of the things that were difficult about your experience, I honestly may not be here either, so I deeply appreciate that. I love your commitment to all of the things that you hold dear, I love how you are resolved in how you feel and how you best represent, you know, those individuals that maybe go underrepresented sometimes, and so we're going to miss you, but I know it's not the last of you, you're just going to show up somewhere else and do awesome things there, and that's always good, so.
Thank you.
They've hit a lot of the really good points, no, you know, we, same, we met each other before, had great conversation about, you know, that call to service, I mean, obviously, your husband has been doing it for several years, and in the capacity of mom and wife, you support the family, and at the same time, you were almost asking them to support you in serving your community, and they have, and life happens and complexities, I mean, when we were first talking about it, who would have ever thought that, you know, COVID was going to last as long as it did, and all the things that happened with it, and that doesn't serve justice, right? There's a legacy that's left in our community for all of the things that you've been a part of the last, you know, almost four years now, that residents will never understand what it takes to raise your hand, most residents will not understand what it means to raise your hand, to step forward, to put yourself at risk of friendships, relationships, inner circles, all the things, and every one of us up here has felt that, and we're not immune to that, and it, and it, it's all part of it, but yet, you continue to serve your community to best represent as many as people, as many of the people as you could, you do it with a strong moral compass, you do it with a pure heart, and then unwavering commitment and love for your community, and that's, that's never, that should never be questioned. You don't owe anybody anything, and you, you've served, you've served your community, you've, you've done something that very few ever even raise their hand to do, and so we thank you for your contributions, we thank you for everything, your sacrifices, you're an amazing human being, and we definitely, as a council, we were better with you here, and we wish you the best of luck in all the things, and we will see you later.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, we will move on to 5-4 now, which is our National Public Works Week proclamation. John, you want to? proclamation. Um, John, you want to take this assert?
Certainly. Thank you, City Councilmembers. 2024 is the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Um, the association also has a Canada chapter, so states, provinces, cities, and other municipalities across North America are encouraged to celebrate with official government proclamations in recognition of the contribution of public works in our community. And, uh, I know firsthand, I serve on a national committee right now with the members from Canada, and we talk about issues. And it's like, oh, yeah, we have to deal with that too, and how much smoke do you have, and that sort of thing. And we just want to recognize the effort and the contributions made by Isaac and all the other public works, uh, individuals to the betterment of our community.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, as a, as a council, we will read through the proclamation for the National Public Works Week, May 19 to 25 of 2024.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Farmington, and?
Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who include maintenance workers, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for building, improving, protecting, and operating our nation's transportation corridors, water supply, wastewater systems, storm drainage systems, fleet, and other facilities essential for our citizens, and?
Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Farmington to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and?
Whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the, by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association.
Now therefore, I, Joshua Hoyt, Mayor, on behalf of the city, the Farmington City Council, do hereby designate the week of May 19 to 25 of 2024 as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, maintenance workers, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Farmington, Minnesota, to be affixed on the sixth day of May 2024. Our next item on the agenda is five-five, which is to proclaim May 15, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 12 to 18 as Police Week. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you're aware, President John Kennedy, um, declared, uh, May 15 to be, uh, Peace Officers Memorial Day, um, each year, and the week that May 15 falls in is Police Week. Um, so we've been celebrating this ever since. It gives our communities an opportunity to thank our, our police officers, and deputies, and state troopers, and conservation officers, and all the sworn law enforcement throughout the, throughout the nation, an opportunity to say thank you. Um, as we know, sadly, the, the number of sworn law enforcement officers that sacrifice their lives each year grows each year. I believe the number we're up to now is over 24,000, uh, law enforcement officers in history have, have given the ultimate sacrifice. Um, so this is an opportunity to, uh, for our communities to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll read the proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15, 2024, and Police Week, May 12 to 18 of 2024.
Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week it falls, it falls in as Police Week, and?
Whereas there are more than 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers honorably, honorably serving in communities across the United States of America, including the dedicated men and women of the Farmington Police Department, and?
Whereas the Farmington Police Department is a modern law enforcement agency, providing a vital public service through our mission of service in the interest of peace and justice, and?
Whereas since 1786, over 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and died in the line of duty, and?
Whereas in honor of Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week, the city of Farmington invites members of the public to honor the Farmington Police Department at their Police Week open house on Saturday, May 18, 2024, from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM. Now therefore, I, Joshua Hoyt, Mayor, on behalf of the Farmington City Council, do hereby proclaim May 15, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and also proclaim the week of May 12 to 18, 2024, as Police Week. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Farmington, Minnesota, to be affixed on this sixth day of May 2024. Our next item is five-six, the proclamation for Farmington Due Days, June 20 to 23. Shirley?
Uh, this is a proclamation allowing everyone to enjoy all the festivities and activities during the annual due days celebration.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we will read the proclamation for Farmington Due Days.
Whereas in 1979, Pepsi-Cola announced that the citizens of Farmington drink more Mountain Dew per capita than any other city. And whereas a city festival was planned to celebrate, and the citizens of Farmington have continued to support this festival since 1979, and?
Whereas Farmington City Code Section 3115 allows the city council to grant an exception to ordinance Section 314 prohibition, which states that it is unlawful for any person to drink or display an open container, any intoxicating liquor, or non-intoxicating malt liquor upon any public street, alley, sidewalk, walkway, or thoroughfare within the city limits of Farmington, and?
Whereas an exception to the ordinance will be made by proclamation for a specified period of time to accommodate a public, civic, or municipal activity, community-wide, such as a celebration or festival, where the public may enjoy local and regional music and arts, activities, history, and culture, and?
Whereas the festival may have changed its name, location, and activities over the years, but the one thing that has not changed is the citizens of Farmington who love to celebrate each summer.
Now therefore, I, Mayor Joshua Hoyt, on behalf of the City Council of the city of Farmington, do hereby proclaim an exception to City Code Section 3 Tack 11 Tack 4 for due days from Thursday, June 20 through Sunday, June 23, and ask that the citizens of Farmington join me in celebrating. Due days, June 20 through June 23, 2024. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Farmington, Minnesota, to be affixed on this sixth day of May 2024. All right. Our next item is citizen comments. If there's anyone in attendance wishing to speak, feel free to do so at this time. Just state your name and address. And I'm going to read this real quick. Uh, citizen comments are a time for anyone to address the city council on matters not on the agenda. Those speaking should state their name and address and limit their comments to five minutes. The council will not engage in discussion on your topic, but those issues requiring response will be responded to by the next council meeting. The city council asks that anyone speaking at the meeting, please be respectful. You're good, sir.
David Pripzloff, 20255 Aiken Road. First of all, not to be included in the first five minutes. Katie Porter, Councilmember Katie Porter. I happen to be here tonight while you're resigning. It's, I've been on the table there. It's a thankless job, as I always looked at, and for that, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
If not for my actions last fall, restoring my yard, my yard would be a muddy mess, and the city would have more erosion control on it. In January, I filed a lawsuit for reimbursement of costs I incurred, which I had asked the city many times the last, last year for. And with many different options, that was denied. In March, the League of Minnesota Cities and I settled out of court, which the city should have done last year. I think two staff members thought that they were above the law and knew it better than what it is, and dragged this out. I think the council should reprimand and/or discipline them for wasting time and resources. An email that was sent to me from the city, it was communicated, and that, that time, this would be the final correspondence regarding the project due to extensive time and resources already allocated to address your concerns. This is what I had brought up last fall. So they're wasting time and resources on me, but then they did it again. And further in this email, we appreciate your understanding of this matter, and we remain committed to transparency and effective communication. Not really. I don't get to say how much I pay for city taxes or utility bills, and I don't think the city should say that they spent enough time on taxpayers' concerns or issues, especially when they created the issues. Now, can you tell the residents when this project will be addressed, such as erosion control devices be cleared, silt fences, and the black tubes removed? Or did the weeds planted last year not do their job and not come back up this spring? I can tell you, not a lot came back up this year, and the hydro seed on the property north of me is dead, and that's what my, my yard would have been. The straw mesh is on the ground and nothing growing along curb and trail across from me. Looks terrible, and it is a safety hazard, as someone walking could trip on it. Mr. Mayor, I showed you issues last year that you said would be addressed in the spring as a punch list items. Not forgetting the trees just pushed, just pushed over for the water runoff swale. Or to get this project complete and to make it look presentable to residents, do we all need to file a lawsuit together? Councilmember Wilson, you just had some work done on your house. Did you have to go through what residents along Aiken Road are going through to tie yet and finish the project? I think not. Why should a private contractor do a better job or be held to a higher standard than a contractor hired by the city? Which brings me to a new letter that's been, uh, sent out, that they're going to be running fiber optics up along Aiken Road. And I did talk to one of the people on this list, Jason, and he's obviously going to work with me on my property and try to do what he can not to go on it. Um, when I told him who I was, all he said was, you're the one with the green grass. You're the one with the flat yard. Yeah, it looks pretty presentable. And I think that's what we want all city residents to do, is have their property pretty presentable. And so I did a lot of work to that. I will continue to talk with Jason on this. Um, he did say the permitting process through the city was terrible. It took him a very long time to get the permit. As to why it wasn't done last year when the street was being done, he told me it wasn't requested from the development across from Meteville Elementary. That's why they're running it. But I will work with him, and hopefully, we won't have to dig up the yard. But I do think we should have some answers on what we're going to do with the project as it sits today. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We will move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Nick. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on. We have item 12-1 under new business, which is to establish public hearing, uh, date to consider proposed tax abatement, uh, and five-year street reconstruction plan. Uh, let me see here real quick. Kim, you're good.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Staff are proposing the issuance of bonds later this year to partially finance planned capital projects. Tax abatement bonds are proposed to fund a portion of the Rambling River Center renovations, and street reconstruction bonds to finance street improvements for the Sixth and Maple Street Reconstruction Project. First step in the process is to issue these bonds, is to conduct public hearings. The first hearing will address the establishment of the tax abatement, while the second will consider the adoption of the city's five-year street reconstruction plan. Tonight, we are simply asking for your approval on setting a date for these two required public hearings. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Otherwise, we just kindly request that you approve the resolution calling for public hearings to be held on June 3.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Kim.
Steve?
None.
Holly?
No.
Nick?
No questions.
I have no questions. We look for a motion to adopt resolute, adopt resolution, uh, 2024 Tack 37, calling for public hearings on the approval of a proposed tax abatement by the city on certain property located within the city, and a proposal to adopt the city's five-year street reconstruction plan and issue bonds therefore.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Holly. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brenant.
Yes.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
Councilmember Porter.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes. Thank you, Kim. All right. Our next item is 12-2, which is receive bids and award a contract for the 2024 street improvement project. John?
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I do have a PowerPoint to, to present and go through some of the information. Uh, and it's mostly self-explanatory. Uh, what we're doing this evening is receiving the bids from the contractors and awarding a construction contract. The project location, as was referred to earlier, was Sixth Street, is Sixth Street from Ash to south of Walnut, and Maple Street from Fourth to Sixth, and a short segment east of Sixth. It's shown graphically here on an aerial photo. It's the area that's clear, uh, on the southwest corner, and right in the middle of the site is Farmington Elementary School. We have been in regular contact with them, uh, to coordinate this construction activity. So the bid results, uh, we had seven bidders. A low bid was received from Hazelton Construction in the amount of $1,908,486.25. But we had very good interest. There were many more prime contractors and subcontractors that obtained plans for the project. So the project cost identified in the CIP had general obligation bonds, one and a half million, and then the sewer fund, stormwater fund, and water fund paying for their, uh, work items, with a total of $3 million. Based on the bid unit prices and estimated quantities, um, I provide a breakdown, the amount paid for with general obligation bonds, about 1.286 million. The sanitary sewer fund, only a small amount. We're replacing a very short amount of pipe on the project. We do have extensive storm sewer work, which is reflected in the cost, and we are adding and replacing some, uh, water mains on the site. When we add the indirect costs of about $346,000, which includes engineering, geotechnical surveying, uh, advertisement, an estimate of bonding costs, uh, it comes to about 18% of the project. So the project cost overall, about 2, 2.254 million dollars. And that's rounded, and that includes no construction contingency. So regarding the bids, the low bid's about 29% than the engineer's estimate. There is about $107,000 separating the low bidder from the third low bidder. So when we receive bids, uh, we're trying to determine if the contractors all perceive the work scope and task the same way, meaning they're adequately defined, uh, they're adequate quantities to cover it. And usually when that happens, you have tighter bids. On a, a $2 million bid, the lowest and the third lowest were about $107,000 apart, good tight bids. Average bid was about 2.127 million dollars. So where does the low bid differ from the engineer's estimate of the 104 bid items? These bid items, the mobilization, removing bituminous pavement, common excavation, aggregate base class five curb and gutter, and the 50 and 21-inch, uh, storm sewer pipe, and the 48-inch storm sewer manholes, where, is where a lot of the cost difference came in. It's just a matter of making a different assumption as to what the unit prices were going to be. And finally, for the general obligation bond funding source, 1.5 million dollars was estimated. If you take the low bid amount for the geo work, the street work, and the indirect costs, it comes to about 1.517 million dollars. So we're getting all that we wanted to out of the street bonding on this project. We're getting very close to what we estimated. So from a bidding and construction standpoint, um, the plans were approved. We have the bid opening. We're at the May 6, awarding construction contract. We'll have a pre-construction meeting. It was dependent on action tonight, later this week. Next week, we'll actually have a pre-construction neighborhood meeting where the superintendent and the inspector will be at the meeting, and they do most of the talking. It's to get the, give the opportunity for residents to contact them, talk to them directly. Actually, Rich Schimmel has already been out on the site talking to property owners, uh, as he was marking trees. And, uh, substantial completion for this project is August 30. We had a start date of June, but they've asked to do some tree removal sooner, and we're working with the elementary. we're working with the elementary school to see where their comfort level. If it's away from the school, it's probably no problem, but if it's near the school, we wouldn't do it during any sort of arrival/departure hours. Final completion is the end of September, and our two-year warranty is two years down the road. Requested action is to accept the bids and award a contract for construction of the 2024 Street Improvement Project to Hazelton Construction. A fair ball in the amount of their bid, $1,908,486.25, and the authorized, the mayor and city clerk to execute same. As we've done on prior projects, this action includes approval of a change order contingency of $190,000. Be established as an aggregate of all change order increases, with a maximum amount of $50,000 for any single change order increase without prior city council approval. It's rare that we would need that much, and in fact, the last project where this was done, we may have had 1% changes from what was bid to what was finalized. And the thing with these construction contracts, it's based on estimated quantities. So, you know, 124 feet of pipe, it could be 125, could be 123. And so, the final contract amount will vary certainly from the original contract amount, but we want to put something in place such that if something comes up in the field, that has to be addressed immediately, that staff has the discretion to move forward with that within these boundaries.
Thank you, sir.
And with that, I'd respond, any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have questions. I appreciate being super cognizant of school schedule, transportation, all of that, obviously being a family that's affected, and I just very much appreciate you taking the time to make the relationship with administration and so on, neighbors, all of that. So communication is excellent, and just appreciate your proactive approach on this whole project.
Steve?
Couple things, John. So you did point this out. You know, the fact that we had seven bidders and that there was a tight spread, I think that is very favorable. And I presume that we do this, but just to make sure that the low bidder, you have compared what we're looking for against... I mean, they didn't miss anything, right? So we got 100% accuracy in terms of what we wanted and what was bidded, correct?
Yeah. Mayor and councilmembers, we check all the bids, so they fill in the unit price, we have the quantities. We check the math, we make sure nothing was missed, we made sure they have their bid bond and that they've signed all the documentation.
Okay. And then in terms of this particular contractor, I don't recall seeing them in the past, and they were obviously part of our pool, correct? Or were they outside of our pool?
Mayor and councilmembers, with the contractors, it's not a pool. We open it up to whomever would want to bid on it. But Hazelton, I have worked with them a number of times. They've done work further south, and very successfully, they have all the staffing and equipment to complete the project successfully in the time specified.
Good. All right, well, I just appreciate the organization that you put together with this project, so thank you.
Holly?
Well, to borrow a page from your book, Mayor, I think this is a perfect example of good data in, good data out, right? We're at this point in the project, and the data that you have spent so much time collecting so that we're able to do projects like this and understand the scope, is translating now into contractors that understand the scope, and into a finished project that is expected to be exactly what it needs to be. And I just have such a deep appreciation for how well this formula works for you, and how much time and energy you dedicated to finding, you know, exactly what we need in order to do things like this. So no questions, just, thank you.
Nick? I can't really follow that up, but I just really appreciate all the thoroughness on all this stuff. It's nice that it's almost become an automatic thing, that we know what to expect when we go through this process, now that we've done it a couple times, and I appreciate all the detail that's going into it, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo my peers in the sense that we... The process started to improve last year through the few projects that we had. Knowing that we had 2024 and 25 coming, and the volume of projects, the importance of getting out earlier in the process, right? Communicating more. Communicating, and communicating more, but also the transparency on the funding sources and the cost, and why there's a contingency and a breakdown. It's just, it's... For the average person, it is so much easier to understand what you're doing, when you're doing it, how you're doing it. And so, a great amount of appreciation for that. Thank you. With that, we'd look for a motion to approve the item as presented.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Holly, second by Katie. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
Councilmember Porter.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnettz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Moving on to 12-3, we have our resignation and vacancy of Councilmember Porter.
I can take this one, Mayor. So before the council is a resolution declaring the vacancy, Councilmember Porter submitted her written resignation. It'll be effective at the close of this meeting. She won't be able to vote on this item, but she will be able to vote on the next item and everything else that's been going on on today's agenda. So, the request then is to adopt Resolution 2024-38, accepting a city council member's resignation and declaring a vacancy on the city council.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-38.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Holly. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnettz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
All right, we'll move... Leah, you got 12-4 then.
Yeah, rock and roll. So, this next one is kind of more nerdy. So the council bylaws have an acting mayor position, which Councilmember Porter is currently qualified for. It's very particular. It's about the number of years you've been elected, and the amount of votes you got when you were elected. No one else is qualified once she's resigned. So, a new acting mayor will need to be selected, and so step one is to suspend the bylaws, and that requires unanimous vote as it relates to that particular section, and then council will need to appoint a new acting mayor. And this is just to the end of 2024, is how long the suspension of those bylaws will last.
Thank you, ma'am. First, we look for a motion to suspend the bylaws as it relates to the prerequisites of the acting mayor as described in City Council Bylaw Section 1, Subsection 3.
Motion.
Oh. Second. I didn't know if I could...
You can.
Not.
Yes.
Can I be my last motion? Nick, do you mind?
Oh, goodness.
Can go down in history that way? Thank you. Motion.
Motion by Katie.
Go ahead.
Second. Second by Nick. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnettz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
Councilmember Porter.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
All right, the second item that was requested is to appoint a new acting mayor. And really, there's... We can just arbitrarily appoint, or someone can raise their hand. We can follow previous bylaws, which was the top vote getter in the previous election year. And since we've gone through, we're in year four now, it would have been the 2022 election, which if by consensus would be Councilmember Burnettz. The other option is to kind of de facto go back to that cycle. It was Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Porter, go back to Councilmember Wilson, and then at a future time, decide if we want to permanently update the bylaws for the weird scenarios that come up, right?
It's fun.
Like the catchalls. So, that's an open discussion item.
I will make a motion to appoint Councilmember Burnettz as the temporary acting mayor for the remainder of 2024. I will second that.
Okay. Motion by Steve. Second by Nick. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Burnettz.
You can vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Lean.
Yes.
Councilmember Porter.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt.
Yes.
All right, that was remarkably easier than I thought it was gonna be for some reason. Discussion?
Yeah, you start moving around, you know, bylaws and stuff, it gets weird quick.
Okay, city council roundtable. Leah?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to say to Councilmember Porter, I said this briefly just before the meeting, thank you so much for your passion that you brought to this job. It was great seeing you in this season, and it takes a lot of bravery to kind of revisit those priorities, and to focus on your family and your education, and no list of priorities is right or wrong, but it takes guts to reanalyze that stuff, so thank you for that. And also, I got news that there is another calf in the bison herd, so they're at 15.
I love that.
That's my news, thank you.
For the commissioner, Leah is our bison update.
I keep a tally. Thank you.
Nick?
Yeah, thank you, Katie, for all your years of service, and thank you to all the staff for all of your tireless, hard work. It is very much appreciated.
Holly?
I'm not gonna look at you. I'm just gonna look this way and say, I deeply appreciate being able to serve alongside you for as long as we've been able to do that, and I look forward to seeing all the magnificent things that you're gonna do in all the other spaces. Take care of your babies. As we know, they grow very quickly. Other news, I actually have a couple of things today. I feel like I've got talking things. In the consent agenda, there were a lot of things that were happening as it relates to different departments and individuals that have been working tirelessly to do our community celebration of due days. And so, my recommendation is just for the community of Farmington. If you have never gone, go spend a day there, spend a half a day there, go for a couple hours, bring your kids, you're gonna have a great time. And then, when you see someone in one of their volunteer shirts, say thank you, because I promise you that they have been working behind the scenes for hours and hours and hours to plan this for you, and it's like a party for 7,000 or 10,000 of your best friends, so it's a great, great opportunity to come out and show community support. And then last, for me at least, is just a huge shout-out selfishly, fully, for Farmington High School Theater. They put on a fantastic run of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, and were recognized at a state level for that. They swept what is considered the Spotlight in Education Awards, with 11 out of 11 possible awards being presented on an outstanding level for every aspect of the show. And so, for everyone who came out and stepped outside their comfort zone to support the theater program that could, as a parent of one of those theater kids, I just say thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I can go down, that's fine. Yeah. I look out at the crowd, and I'm thinking, what a diverse group of people, and I love it. We have new hires, we have department heads, we have people that continue to show up, even if they're not gonna speak, right? And even if they have things to say that we don't want to hear, but you continue to show up and speak and advocate for yourself and your community. Mike, your position is not an enviable one either. Anytime you're in the spotlight, right, you're responsible. And I didn't take that lightly. I don't take resignation lightly. Like I said, it's been an absolute honor to serve, and of course, I would be remiss to not mention my good friends that have been here to support me through what was a really hard decision, and encouraged me, and I just really appreciate you guys. And speaking of friends, I was supposed to give my son's friend Bobby, who is one of our new hires, a little shout-out. He told me I needed to do that, so I said it'll be one of my last things that I do, Bobby. But I just, again, thank my colleagues, department heads, everybody. What a pleasure to live in this community and to serve in this capacity, so thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
So, on Saturday, I went to the art fair and thanked Kelly and the Park and Rock Department and the seniors for coordinating that kind of a neat event. And I think it was back this year after having a... After having a, we couldn't do it because of the construction last year, so that worked out well. I would... I certainly can appreciate being in Holly's shoes, but I went to Joseph, and then I had to go a second time, and it just left me with a wow. And it's still a wow, so, you know, kudos to your daughter and really all the talented folks with the theater program. You know, there's so much incredible talent with our arts and theater and music programs at Farmington. We see it all the time, from, you know, fifth grade band all the way up to the high school students choir, and it just blew me away, so... Next, I just wanted to thank the teachers at Bachman for allowing me to come in and be Shark Tank for three times, 15-minute rounds, and that was a good time to see that. I do want to... And I'm not sure how many of the 24,000 actually watch this program. I've heard it's probably about half the population tunes in to watch it. But in all seriousness, the roundabouts, especially the one at 195th and Pylon Knob Road, I worry about that literally every single day during the spring and summer and fall, because there's runners like myself and a lot of other people, there's bikers, and there's traffic cruising through those roundabouts at, I think, higher than what they should be speeds. So really, really, really pay attention. I mean, it just takes a split second, and I'm just not gonna go there, but you understand what I mean. Lastly, and I rarely do this, because really, we could all spend an hour talking about amazing people in the community, but there is one person I want to highlight, because what she did a couple weeks ago, just, it kind of blew me away, and just kind of knowing all that she does for the community anyway. I'm sure many people know Laura Pierce. She used to be at Bachman as an administrator, now is at the high school as assistant principal. Anybody who is on her Facebook page knows all the things she's up to, but she qualified for Boston Marathon, which for anybody that's done a marathon, I've done, I think, 14 or 15 myself, I will never, ever qualify for Boston, I will never be a fast runner. But it's really the only marathon that you can qualify for, that you have to qualify for to participate in, and she's done that now twice. Now, for the average person, that would be, you know, a fun adventure, then you come back home and you get on with life, but six days later, she traveled to London to run the London Marathon, and she ran that in the same time. The reason I wanted to highlight her beyond that part of it, which I think is really cool, is that she does a lot of work for Kendu Canines, and is really involved, I think, with Mark Tauchi at the high school. And it's a program that benefits developmentally disabled children, and, you know, you'll see, I think there was a student at Bachman that benefited maybe from the high school too. And there's a lot of people like that, like Laura, in our community. And again, I guess the reason I bring that up is I'm inspired by the work that she does. But, you know, if there's a passion out there that you're thinking, boy, I wonder if there's a way I can participate or do this in the Farmington community, whether it's volunteering in the schools, volunteering for the city, or your favorite nonprofit that benefits the city, there's so many different ways, and there's so many amazing people that do great things around the community. But kudos to you, Laura, for all that you do. And so, that's less than that portion, and again, Katie, you're really just an amazing human being. You've got a heart of gold. There are many nights where you would explain, you know, just kind of what's going on with the family, and sick kids, and COVID, and all the stuff that we've talked about, and you found a way to be here and be a positive contribution, when I know, you know, that you had stuff at home that was just kind of weighing you down, because, you know, it's hard being away from young kids, and, you know, it's hard when your spouse is away, and you're just balancing all that stuff that you do. But you led with grace, and your decision-making was sound, and I'm gonna miss you.
Thanks, sir. Welcome to the new staff. Great to have you here. As we know, it's not mandatory to show up, but we really do appreciate you coming, so we can see you in person and for council to know who you are. So when they see you next time, they'll recognize you and know you, and we appreciate that, because this is time out of your personal time, so, you know, out of your busy night, so we appreciate that. And Katie, thank you for your time and talent and your sacrifices, and I would like to thank your family also for their sacrifices, because as we all know, when we sign up for a role of elected official, it's a whole family that has sacrifices and gives in to helping the community. And we have built so many building blocks and foundations for Farmington within the last two years, and please never forget that you've always been part of that. So, thank you for being so supportive, and you will be greatly missed, and I know you won't be a stranger. So, thank you.
Shirley?
I'm thankful to have worked with you.
I'm thankful to have worked with you for the past year, Katie, and I wish you best.
Thank you, Shirley.
Shirley?
Very similar, Katie. Thank you. I know you and I have had some very meaningful conversations about shared priorities we have outside of the city realm. I found that to be really, really valuable to me, but I really appreciate your service. So thank you. Thanks, Shirley.
Thank you, councilmember, for all your support. We've undergone a lot of changes in public works, and we're doing a lot of things differently. So I really appreciate the support you show, me, and our staff as we've gone through those changes.
Thanks, John.
Katie, thank you for your support, but more, thank you for being a Parks and Recreation teammate. You have gone south to pick up bunnies for us for breakfast with the bunnies. You have started a grandparent writing campaign at the Ramblin' River Center. You have adopted a park. You have had your daughter text me on a Saturday when someone was breaking into the bathhouse. What else have you done for Parks and Recreation?
The garden?
Show up to coffee with the seniors.
The garden?
The garden. Worked on the community gardens.
Didn't you paint the chairs, too?
What's that?
At Deepaway Arts Park, wasn't it, that painted the chairs?
Yep, you painted the chairs at Deepaway Arts Park. Thanks for all your help, you guys. You guys are all great teammates. So just the things that you've done for the Parks and Recreation Department. And I know that I'm gonna continue to see you, because you'll be involved. I know I'll see you at Music in the Park. Obviously, you attended regularly, and we appreciate that. So thank you for all the support you've given Parks and Recreation, but all the things you've done for us and helped us with. Really appreciate it, and we couldn't do it without you. And we'll see you at the next event.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Katie, I've only been here six months, so we really haven't had a chance to get to know each other, but I have enjoyed that time, and I wish you the best of luck in the future. Thank you, Kim.
Just echo like everybody said, thank you for all your support. You stick behind the fire department. Your kids, I know, enjoy coming down, and it's always open for them. We have our open houses and all that, so don't be a stranger. Swing on down, and, you know, we can have coffee, bring the kids, we can get them dressed up in the fire uniforms. We can do the little obstacle course for them again. They'll have a fun time.
Thanks, Matt.
Katie, I think the one thing that I want to point out to everybody in the room and everybody watching at home the most is, I want to congratulate you for having the courage to show everyone that it's okay to choose family over profession or ambition, or in your case, your elected position. It's an important thing in today's world that people should recognize that family's gotta come first. And you're making a heck of an example here. So thanks for that.
Thanks, Gary.
Well, I just want to make sure I drop a nugget about Mental Health Awareness Month. Should not just be talked about during the month of May. Should be talked about every day, every week, in every scenario, in every circle, between everybody. So please, have the conversations this month, have them tomorrow, have them at your place of employment, utilize the resources, have them with your circle, have them with your pastor. Have the conversations, because mental health and physical health are two in the same. And we are quick to tell kids to put on a helmet before they get on their bike. We're quick to tell kids to look both ways before they cross the street. But we're slow to tell them to express their feelings and talk about the things that are going on inside their head. And until we normalize those conversations and reduce the stigma that is associated with mental health and the tie to self-harm, self-abuse, drug abuse, all the things, until we can reduce that stigma and have the open and honest conversations, we're gonna continue to have a problem. And so I encourage everyone to go out of your way, make an intentional effort to engage in some level of conversation with someone that you trust. And it's okay to not be okay and have those conversations, but, and not just in the month of May, only every day and as much as possible. I would beg of you to do that.
Motion to adjourn.
You know the beauty of that? There is no discussion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned at 8:14.
On any further discussion.